6 o'clock, we're calling to order the May 19th legislative session of York City Council. And please call the roll.
Rivera.
Here.
Washington.
Here.
Ritter Dixon.
Here.
Walker.
Here.
Nixon.
Here. We need to have action on the minutes as distributed for April 21st. Were there any additions or corrections to those minutes? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the minutes of April 21st as distributed, please say aye.
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 Very well, that motion carries. We will be having our next meeting on Tuesday, no, Wednesday, June 3rd because of Election Day being on the 2nd. So it'll be here presumably remotely again, and all items are due for the agenda by the 27th. We will also have a public hearing on June 3rd at 6 o'clock prior to our legislative session to discuss and learn about the economic development license, liquor license for Hamir, and also for freedom barbecue and catering. Those that will all take place on June 3rd again, which is a Wednesday. We need to introduce bill. Ms. Ritter Dixon.
So introduced.
Bill number 10, introduced by Judy Ritter Dixon, an ordinance amending the 2020 CDBG and Home Program budgets to reflect changes resulting from actual funding levels rolled over from 2019 and actual funding amounts for 2019 allocations.
And this item will remain until our next meeting on June 3rd. Next, we have items 2 through 9, which are on a consent agenda. Is there any item that council would like to remove from that for discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor.
All right.
Henry.
Yes?
Items, this is Sandy, items 7 and items 8.
Okay, those you want to move, you want to move those for discussion, is that correct?
Correct.
Very good. All other items on the consent agenda?
I do, I do want to make a comment.
The Councilman Rivera would like to make a comment on agenda item number 9, I mean, agenda item number 5 about the declaration of disaster emergency before council votes.
Okay, we'll pull that one as well. So items 5. Yes, ma'am.
Council President Nixon, I would need to abstain from voting for resolution number 9.
And the reason being?
My place of employment applying for the funding.
All those in favor of allowing her to abstain, please say aye.
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 Aye. Thank you, Ms. Washington.
Thank you, Council President Nixon.
So that will, that will have to be removed as well and voted on separately. All right, so items 5, 7, 8, and 9 are pulled from the consent agenda. All those in favor of accepting the consent agenda as altered, please say, oh no, we need to go through the roll. Please, please call the roll on that.
Okay, Rivera.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Ritter Dixon.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Nixon.
Yes. All right. Item number 5, Mr. Rivera, you had some comments.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Excuse me, Councilman, before we get to, before we get to that next business, I think, again, I think, Henry, that was, Council President, I think that was the vote to allow a consent agenda for those items. Council still have to vote to affirmatively approve those items.
Oh, okay, I thought we just did, but I guess not. All right, again, call, please call the roll for those items on the consent agenda.
Okay, so this would be calling a roll for approving the consent agenda, and that's Rivera.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Ritter Dixon.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Nixon.
Yes. All right, motion carries. Now we're moving to item number 5. Mr. Rivera.
Yes, and I just want to preface by saying that I, that I do, I am in favor of extending the declaration of disaster through June 30th, but what I would like to say is that while COVID-19 has infected our community, and specifically the black and brown communities at much higher rates than our white brothers and sisters, it has affected our business communities in terms of losses of business, unemployment, lack of a paycheck, loss of employees, and numerous other casualties of this horrible pandemic. We must be diligent and proactive as we move into the yellow phase of Governor Wolf's restrictions starting on Friday, and come up with safe and creative ways to not only put businesses, business owners back in business, but people back to work safely. We, as elected officials, have a duty and responsibility to ensure that our constituents are informed as to the process and progress of stay-at-home, social distancing, and red, yellow, and green phases of this pandemic, up to and including safety measures in place, restrictions, and do's and don'ts while ensuring preventative measures. The lack of funding sources for some of our hardest-hit communities, including barber shops, salons, dog groomers, restaurants, real estate agents, and manufacturers, many of whom live in this very city they call home, and provide employment to individuals with families and who cannot pay their mortgages, rents, bills, nor purchase food for their families, has also resonated with me. My hope is with, is with the improvements, improvements we have made over the course of the last few weeks to flatten the curve, we will be able to slowly progress to our new normal.
Any other comments from council?
I do, I have a question in regards to the extension for this. Is the mayor present?
Yes, he is.
Or is anyone?
Okay.
So what does this look like? As we, as your county enters a yellow phase on Friday, what does it look like for the city? I know that the declaration for disaster of emergency, we're going to vote on that to be extended until June 30th, but what does it look like from your administration in regards to enforcement for some of our small businesses that Councilmember Rivera mentioned?
Yes, the yellow phase allows for almost all.
I think your mic's not on, is your mic on?
My mic is on.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yeah. Can you guys hear him?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah. Can hear you.
Thank you. The yellow phase allows many of our businesses to open, however, high, high, human-to-human contact areas, those types of businesses do remain closed by the governor's order. So that includes barber shops, salon, hair salons, nail salons, gyms, bars, and recreation facilities. So those operations still need to remain closed. We did put out, and I believe, I'm hoping, we'll have approval for a plan to give out grants. We got over 100 applications for, from these small businesses.
That's great.
To give out grants up to 500, or up to $5,000. So unfortunately, they do remain closed, and it is due to the high-contact issues there, the intimate contact. The parks are open, however, the, according to the Pennsylvania Park and Recreation Guidance, we are going to continue to keep the skate park closed, the basketball courts closed, and the playground equipment closed. And that's in the city and in the county. The county is also following the same guidelines. Let's see, we are looking to try to find a way to put out some more, some tables and things like that around the city where people can start to perhaps buy some lunches and sit in, in one, some of our areas like the square. We're looking at that plan right now, trying to help with the takeout, trying to help support our restaurant businesses by giving areas to hopefully not congregate, but having small groups of people responsibly sit down. And I believe there are interests, there is interest from some of our restaurants to take care of those areas as if they were their own. So go out there and spray the sanitizer every 20 or 30 minutes to make sure that we're maintaining those without extra responsibility on the city of York. The parking facilities in the city of York are going to be going back to normal as of Tuesday, which means you will have to pay meters throughout the city, you will have to pay the parking garages, and also starting June 1st, street sweeping enforcement will occur again as well. I think a main piece of the continuing declaration is two, two pieces. One, we continue to move staff around somewhat outside of their job descriptions, and the , the emergency declaration allows us to do that. Also, we want to make sure that we continue to have the emergency declaration in place when it comes to potential funding coming down from Pima and FEMA, showing that we are in a state of emergency helps to qualify. Am I correct on that, Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Yes, yeah, that helps us qualify for reimbursement from the federal and state government. So those are, that's, I think, and I'd be happy to answer any other questions on that, but that's the, kind of the global look on why we were moving forward with this item on the agenda.
I have a question.
Thank you, that answers my question.
Okay, yes.
Mayor, the holiday is coming, and you know that a lot of people will be in the parks. How do you police the children from not being on the basketball court or in the play area?
Well, that's up to the families to be, I mean, families should be policing their own children. That's kind of a rule that is in place across the board. People should be able to tell their kids, hey, the playground equipment is closed, it can make you sick. Don't get on the playground equipment. That's the reason that, that these, that these facilities are closed. The playground equipment, as we know, is a high-contact area for kids. You know, think about how many kids go down the slide within an eight-hour period, all those kids touching the same places over and over and over again. So we, we are not out generally enforcing that. If we see basketball games going on or, or things getting too crowded, we may send police out to break up a crowd, we may have another staff member from the city of York come out and, and ask the crowd to disperse. But this isn't, as throughout this entire process, we are not trying to, we're not trying to harm the public in our enforcement, we are trying to help the public through our enforcement. So we would, we would definitely ask particularly the parents and guardians of children, explain it to your children. Explain it, hey, you know, you know, when, when one kid sneezes and wipes their hand and then they wipe it on the, on the slide, guess what? That's a way that you can get sick. And it's like that all the time, but it's even more serious right now.
Thank you.
Mayor Helfrich.
Yes, Councilwoman.
Mayor Helfrich, in regards to the holiday, as well as Councilwoman Ritter Dixon mentioned, how about our pavilions? For instance, at Farquhar Park and a few of other, of our parks that have pavilions, about individuals gathering that are more 25 people or more, are we going to be watching out for that and ensuring that individuals don't gather there? Or are our pavilions open for families to gather or not?
No, our pavilions are, are one of the facilities that are not open. I'm sorry I did not mention that because we haven't had the tables out, and I, I'm trying to think about Farquhar Park, whether those tables are out down at the bottom, but in most of our parks, the tables have been removed. So we're, we're, there is no intention that people would be gathering using, using those types of facilities. Again, we're in a period where certainly fewer than 25 people is a rule, preferably fewer than 10 people getting together is still the safest thing until we get into the green phase.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, item number 5, resolution, I am introducing.
We have to vote on that declaration since we pulled it from the consent agenda.
Yes, I know, but I haven't introduced it, I just did.
Oh, oh, okay, I thought you did, I'm sorry, Henry. I thought you did introduce it. Okay, all right. So introduced, and I'll read that one aloud since it was pulled from the consent agenda, and that is a resolution introduced by Henry Nixon, whereas on March 12th, a declaration of disaster emergency was declared in the city of York related to COVID-19, and whereas the city is, and expects to continue to receive support from, in the form of grants and allocations from the Commonwealth and the federal government over the next six weeks to combat COVID, and whereas the city anticipates that it will continue to need the increased flexibility that an emergency declaration gives within regard to receiving and spending funds, now therefore be it resolved, that council hereby extends the declaration until June 30th, 2020.
Move to approve. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion on this item? Is there any further, is there anybody from the public that has called in?
No, Council President.
Very well, please call the roll.
Rivera.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Ritter Dixon.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Nixon.
Yes. And that's so ordered. Next, we have item number 7. Ms. Ritter Dixon.
Sir President.
Can we, can we introduce that?
No. Isn't this one that we pulled, we pulled from the consent agenda?
Yes, and you are to introduce it?
Yes. So introduce.
Is there, is there discussion?
Yes. Can everybody hear me?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay. Although we are going to vote on this for it to be approved, there are still some issues and concerns that the vendors have, and that we have concerns along with them, that there's a, like a lack of communication between the vendors, the administration, and the RDA, and we will continue to watch over this as we go forward with this resolution.
Okay, so it's been introduced.
I think my.
Did the clerk want to read that? Excuse me, would the clerk please read the resolution?
Is there a motion to introduce by short title? Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor, say yes.
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 Oppose, no? And that's resolution number 53.
Diana, was that, was the initial introduction seconded?
It was, it was seconded twice.
Yes.
It was seconded twice. Lou said second, and then it was a delay, and then it queen seconded.
Okay.
Okay. So this will be resolution number 53, and it is a resolution introduced by Judy Ritter Dixon, authorizing the submission of a proposal for in-con donation of the use of Penn Market via the Redevelopment Authority as the 25% match for the Farmers Market Promotion Program of $250,000.
Move to approve.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion on this item by council?
Yes, this is Sandy, Council President. For both items that were pulled, I'm just going to ask the administration, can you just give a summary of these grants so that the community knows what you're looking to do? And one of the concerns from a lot of people in the community, especially folks that are on the West End, is that there is a new direction for the market, and I think that's led to a lot of individuals being confused, a lot of individuals being angry. So can you explain what these grants are about? And then can you also talk about the process in regards to these grants and the Penn Market?
Okay, all right, Blanda, I believe this question would go to you, and it is basically, how is this money, how are we planning on spending this money? Can you respond to thoughts in the community about the market going in a new direction, and whether or not this money has to do with it going in a new direction, which I'm assuming is the grocery store model discussion that had been going on? It's kind of vague, I'm not sure what, but, but I'm assuming that. And, and then how.
Your assumption would be right.
Okay. And then how is, how are you going to continue to engage with the folks in the neighborhood and in, with the market vendors? That, did that sum it up?
Yes, thank you.
Please, please take the mic.
I don't even know who to look at, I'll look at you. There are, there are two different grants. The $100,000 is a local food promotion program, and that is intended to get local food produced to citizens and to people. And then the second grant is Farmers Market Promotion Program, which is local food and farmers markets, specifically local food in farmers market. And they both have, both grants both have similarities, and they both have differences on what they can actually be used for. So our intent is to write them, right now as we apply, write them with broad strokes, that we will do promotion, and we will do improvements, and we will work backwards then as we engage with the vendors and figure out what their, each individual vendors, they all have different desires and different needs. So we'll work that in, and then once we get, these, these grants are up to 100, and up to 250, and a lot of times grants will award you portions of that. So we'll come up with kind of a wish list of everything, and then we'll whittle that down as we get awarded. I think to answer your question, the continued engagement, as you all know, I was up there on Friday, and I'm going to continue to go up there on a regular basis to engage, to talk with the vendors face to face.
Sorry, there's a, sorry.
Whoa, 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 whoa.
Give me one second right here, we have an issue going on here. Henry, are we losing you?
No, it's, it's replaying what Blanda's saying.
Wow.
So it's.
Yeah, there's an echo.
You're speaking.
Is somebody not on, you guys have to be on mute, I think, when he's speaking, because it's feeding back through somebody out there.
Or have on earphones. Henry, do you have on earphones?
I have earphones on.
Okay.
So if the council members.
I don't.
If the council members can go on mute, hitting that little microphone button.
Well, I don't have that on my, on this computer.
I have earphones on.
Did it make a difference when, when I speak? Are you guys hearing feedback?
No.
No.
Blanda, you want to come up here?
Better now?
Yeah. Try it again.
Do other, instead? Just kidding. Do you want me to, is that good?
Continue, Blanda.
Okay, great.
Okay.
So we will continue to engage with the market vendors, we will continue to work with them, more so in the promotion, and someone had asked about the outreach to the community, that's exactly what this is for. And a lot of the feedback we're getting from the vendors, and we know this, is that our promotion is one Facebook page with a couple posts, and we want to get out more to the community, start having some events. The promotion program can actually pay for those events rather than the vendors shouldering that cost on their own. So it's that type of interaction that we can work for Farmers Market Promotion. So right now, as the grants are submitted, they're broad strokes, but they are on a deadline. This is a grant that I had spoken about when I was first hired. Unfortunately, the deadline is typically March or April of each year, and when I started last year, we didn't have time to pull this together to start it. So the deadline for the grant is always about this time every year, so we'll continue to work forward with our plans. And I'm sorry, just so you guys know, we can't hear you in this room, so I apologize.
Yeah, I'll repeat anything that's, that's coming in.
Okay, so just for the record, I'm going to ask this question, is the Penn Market going to become a grocery store, or any portion of it?
Is the, for the record, is the Penn Market going to become a grocery store, any portion of it?
No, that's, that was an idea and a plan, and the vendors didn't like that idea and plan, so we've, we've tabled that, we're not moving forward with anything like that at this point in time.
Yeah, I think it is important, if I may add, I think it is important to say, and I had this conversation with Henry, and I'd be happy to have any input from council members. Now, as you know, this is not, this does not fall under, other than allowing Blanda, who works for the city but also works for the RDA, to apply for these grants, the decision-making isn't within the administration of what happens over there. But the fact remains that some kind of plan for this market has to be put into place, a plan that can sustain the market. Because I guess 35,000, I was corrected the last time, I think it's 35,000 now that the RDA is spending on, on the utilities and other things. So money that, money in our city that is given to us from the federal government and is supposed to be used to fight blight and other things in our city is being diverted out of the Redevelopment Authority to support what we have at Penn Street Market. So we are certainly open to other kinds of plans, real plans that have numbers and budgets and, and not ideas, but plans. Because when the prior mayor supported the RDA getting this building, this was not the plan. The plan was to have it for three years and then hand it back over to somebody that has created a successful system over there. And this has become a, an albatross, frankly, around the RDA's neck, for something that it was not. The RDA's incorporation does not support what they are now doing as landlords of the Penn Street Market. So some kind of plan has to come forward. So if anybody has anything, please bring it to the RDA, and I certainly, as the mayor, am interested in hearing something.
Good. Could I just elaborate?
Of course, please.
It's just, it's not so much albatross is not the right word.
I'm sorry.
But it, the RDA obviously supports Penn Market, wants it to continue to be Farmers Market, but it's, the RDA and the government should not be in the business of running a business. It, it's happy to hold on to the building and provide subsidies as needed, or repairs, or help the entrepreneurs, but the, the RDA Board is, is pretty, pretty clear that their, their job is not to run a market house. Their job is to provide assistance and provide someone to be able to do that. And so they, they are looking for ideas moving forward, and there are a couple different things, but we're not going to do it like we had tried before without the vendor input. And that's, that's kind of, we've learned that very quickly, that that's very critical to the success up there.
Well, and I apologize for my characterization, but when $100,000 goes away from a budget that is meant specifically to. that is meant specifically to help fix blighted buildings and things like that in the City of York, and it is going to utilities for a business, that in my mind is, is not the correct use of that fund, it was never the intended use of the funding. So there was a plan, that plan is not working, so we need another plan.
Yeah. And Mayor, if I could just add one thing, because I was involved in those discussions under the prior administration. I think it's important for everybody to remember that this isn't, Penn Market isn't a business, or hasn't always been owned by the RDA, it hasn't always been run by the city. Up until, I think, three or four years ago, it was in private ownership. The reason the city got involved is because the private owners were well behind on their taxes, it was going to go to tax sale. The prior administration stepped in in order to prevent a sale of the property to who knows who, because anybody can buy it at tax sale. So as the mayor said, this is, this was supposed to be a short-term fix to get it, to save it from tax sale and move on to it in some kind of direction. And it's not just for, it's not the city's market now, it's not the city's, the city shouldn't just be running it. Thanks.
I have, I do have a question and a follow-up. The first question is, and Councilwoman Ritter-Dixon alluded to this in an email thread that was going back and forth earlier this week with, with, as it pertains to the Penn Market and the market master. So, and this is probably a better question for the RDA, but since you're the, I guess, ambassador, or what would you call yourself as the liaison?
I'm the executive director of the RDA.
You're the executive director? Okay, my apologies. So you, they, they let go a previous market master to hire a new market master, which I'm hearing that the relationship between the new market master and the vendors is, is worse now than it was previously. So are we trying to make things better there, or are they getting worse? And my follow-up is, are we connecting with the vendors at the market and asking them? And I know that you did that this week, but had we been doing that prior, prior to this week, when council had suggested you do that? And if we hadn't, why, why weren't we?
Well, I don't want to live in the past, councilman, and I'm not going to discuss...
I'd like to, I'd like to jump in here.
Hold on one second, the President Nixon is jumping in.
I think we're getting off track. What we're trying to discuss here is application to a grant. Specifically, the number, item number seven.
Seven.
Which is... Item number seven, which is a grant for $250,000 that has been explained. I don't think we need to get involved into details of running the market at this juncture for a decision on this particular grant.
I, I think though, that there's a question that needs to be asked, that Sandy's question, when she asked about, will it at any point become a grocery store? And Blanda replied, not at this time. What does that mean?
Did you say, Blanda, did you say not at this time for grocery store, or did you say no?
He said not, not at this point in time. It was his statement.
I said, all of the, I said it's tabled at this time, because we don't know what the idea is later. We really honestly don't. There's been an idea, and I'll, there's been ideas of...
Let me clarify and limit it to the, the item on the table. Is there any intention to use any of this money, if awarded, to turn the Penn Market into a grocery store, or have any part of the market a grocery store?
No.
Does that, does that help by narrowing it down, because...
And the only reason, I apologize, the only reason I sound like I'm wavering or I'm vague on that is because all of the studies and previous reports that we've done, even the Food Trust, who is a, a national leader in farmers markets and urban food and food deserts, the Food Trust came back with a study that said, it should look like a grocery store, and it should function like a grocery store, but be run by vendors. So when someone asks the quote-unquote grocery store, it depends if they mean, does it look like one and function like one, or is it operated like one? So when you really want to get into the details, when we're talking about these grants specifically, the items on the agenda, no. In the future, it may look like a grocery store, run by 20 different independent businesses, which is how a traditional farmers market should be, but this is not the time for that, and we need a lot more work before we're at that point, where we could call it an urban grocery store, run by vendors. That's a different model. The model before that everybody was upset about is that these vendors would have become wholesalers to an operator. The vendors were not thrilled with that idea for many different reasons, and they weren't approached and they weren't engaged like they should have been. And so that idea is dead. So it may, in the future, look like a grocery store, but as for the items right now, no.
So was that an answer to the question and my follow-up that I asked? Because they certainly pertain to the question of, of this grant.
Did you just ask me a question about a question?
No, prior, prior to, my previous question about the market master, because...
Again, I'm not going to discuss contract issues of the RDA or personnel issues here.
Okay.
It is constant improvement on quality, that's always going to, we're always going to improve quality of management, but I'm not going to get into those details.
Okay, perfect.
Any other questions? I can hear you now.
Can we, are there any further comments?
I just wanted to...
Yes.
So, I have a question.
I think Ms. Washington has the floor. Oh, I hate this.
Sandy. It's okay. So just in response to the mayor, I think we're all in agreement that there needs to be something done, and a positive, putting Penn Market to move it forward. The grants, once they were explained to us, they make sense. Speaking for me personally, my issues were, one, I grew up on the West End, talking to vendors, seeing that there was a disconnect in regards to communication, and it's been like that for years. Going all the way down to agreements, the leasing agreements, all that stuff to the market master now. So when it was put on the agenda last month, because there was, wasn't constant communication, there were a lot of people who were upset. And so council made sure that we followed up with the mayor, with Phil, with Blanda, just so that we could get an understanding of what these grants were about. And then we also wanted to make sure that the vendors had an understanding of what those grants were about, and that somebody reached out to them from the RDA, and that person was Blanda, to, to talk to some of the vendors and to see if they had any questions in regards to these grant applications. For me, it was more of the communication piece. And all the time, if you're not constantly communicating, and one person has a perspective and another person has a perspective, sometimes, or a lot of times, that can easily be addressed if you just talk. So I'm grateful that these grant applications are being put before us. And what I would say to the vendors at Penn Market is that you have to make sure as well that you are unified, and that you're communicating with the RDA. If there aren't meetings, then, you know, along with us, we want to be updated, but you have to make sure that you're getting the information needed as well. So the grants from USDA seem like they're going to be great, and hopefully, fingers crossed, we get them, if they're approved tonight. But thank you to the mayor and the administration, who went to the Penn Market and to talk to the vendors and answer any questions that there might have been. Thank you.
Ms. Washington, did you have something?
Yes, I did, Council President. I just wanted to ensure that with the utilization of the grant funds, that as well as making sure we are in communication with the vendors, that we are having open communication with the community, to find out what the community's needs are, what the community wants, what the community desires in the West End, and what the community desires for those who do visit and shop the market. Oftentimes, administration is making decisions for the market, or making decisions when the community input hasn't been incorporated. And so I just want to ensure that with the utilization of the funds, that the community, the community's input is going to be incorporated, so that the community can have what they need, not what so someone else thinks that, thinks that the community needs. It's best to ask the community what they need, and ideals are valid, ideals are how you develop strategies, and strategies are how you develop a plan for the future of the market. And I too commend the administration for the grant, the work on the grants, the funds are definitely needed for the Penn Market. It is a very near and dear place in my heart. And that's about it. I just want to say thank you again, and hopefully we do get the grants and we can see our Penn Market move forward.
Thank you. Anything else from council? Do we have anything from the public on this?
Yeah, no one has called in.
Very well. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Rivera?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ritter-Dixon?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Nixon?
Yes. And that's so ordered. We'll now move on to item number eight.
So introduced.
Resolution number 50, that should be, I don't know what this is. Yeah, 54.
54.
Yeah, 54. Okay, introduced by Judy Ritter-Dixon, a resolution authorizing submission of a proposal for in-con donation of the use of Penn Market via the Redevelopment Authority as the 25% match for the local food promotion program grant of $100,000.
Second.
Judy, move forward.
Move to approve.
He has to move to approve.
Move to approve, I'm ready to second it.
You can second it now, Lou, I already said it.
Thank you. Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Is there anything from the public on this item?
No, Council President.
Very well. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ritter, yeah, I'm listening.
Rivera?
Rivera?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ritter-Dixon?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Nixon?
Yes. And that's so ordered.
Glad we could get a chuckle at my expense.
All right. Next is item number nine, resolution number 55.
Uh, that right... Oh, that's right, it was abstained. Okay, hold on, hold on one second here. Okay, resolution number 55. Is there a motion to introduce by short title?
Some move.
Some move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say yes?
Yes.
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 Resolution number 55, introduced by Judy Ritter-Dixon, a resolution approving a substantial amendment to fiscal year 2019 annual action plan and citizen participation plan for the Community Development Block Grant Program.
Move to, oh, we already moved to approve.
No, we didn't.
Oh, move to approve. Move to approve.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on this item? Anything from the public on this item?
No, Council President.
Very well. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Rivera?
Yes.
Wa- Washington?
Abstained.
Ritter-Dixon?
Yes.
Ritter-Dixon, who's next? Walker?
Walker, yes.
Nixon?
Yes.
Y'all are getting kind of aggressive over there, ain't you?
Forget our names.
All right. That concludes the business for today and for this meeting. Are there any comments in general by council?
Uh, President, was the calling number posted?
I have no idea.
Was it shared with the public?
Yes, it was advertised, and there's a press release on the city's webpage.
Can we just announce the number one time, just in case?
Uh, hold on.
Sure, it's 717-849-1425.
That would probably be helpful to do...
At the beginning, yeah.
Yes, that would be helpful to be done at the beginning. All right, is there any other comment? Hearing none?
I actually have, no, I have a comment, President. I have a comment.
Thank you.
Yes, no problem. Mayor, this is for you. I have noticed with the weather getting warmer, that noise has increased, especially after, what is our, I forget our time in our ordinance, but I've been at my own particular neighborhood, and then I've been in a couple other neighborhoods where the music is just ridiculous. I mean, it's late at night, people have kids that need to go to bed, and you can hear music from blocks away. I'm just putting that out there, and, you know, I'll follow up with you. I did send the email last week, not to you, but just to talk about this issue, because I've been getting complaints, and I've seen, I've seen some things on Facebook too, where folks are complaining about music in the neighborhoods being extremely loud.
My comment, Mr. President, is to the mayor as well, is that since the stay-at-home order, I've seen more trash everywhere than it has been in a long time. Can we follow up? Can we still, I mean, I understand that you have to stay in the house, but it doesn't mean that you have to allow trash to be all over the place.
All right. Are there any other comments from council? Hearing none, Mr. Mayor, do you have anything to share?
Um, yeah, yes. Mr. President, we had, I had talked to you last week about Tom Ray, our business administrator, giving just a brief summary of potential furloughs coming up with the City of York. So, Tom, you prepared for that?
Good evening, excuse me, good evening, council. I'll make this as brief as possible. Based on revenue projection through the end of the year, we believe it's necessary to furlough approximately 103 employees. 30 of those would be full furloughs. These are employees that have been staying at home during the COVID pandemic and not performing any work, but getting paid what we call hazardous pay. The other 75 would be working reduced work hours, ranging anywhere from eight hours per week to 20 hours per week. We hate to do this, but we believe that this is a savings based on our projected revenue loss. Hopefully it will not last very long. So if you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to try to answer them.
How long are they going to be off?
They could be off as long as, as through the end of the year, December 31st.
And I'm sorry, Tom, in his business manner, has forgotten to add the most important part, that is that everybody that is furloughed is making more money by being furloughed than by not being furloughed. If you are familiar with the $600 per week stimulus that the federal government is adding into the, into the unemployment checks, the calculation is that anybody making less than $60,000 a year is actually making more money... $60,000 a year is actually making more money right now on unemployment than they are at their regular job, which has actually become difficult for bringing some people back to work, because they know they're going back to work and making less money when they're going off unemployment than they're making now. But, so currently, yes, it is absolutely true, and please, sir, I'm making a comment, this is not a discussion, sir, sir!
... dollars goes, is only through July, it's not through December.
I didn't say it was through December.
I don't want to have a discussion here.
That was, we have two and a half months that the $600 is still in effect, and that's pending a potential extension from that. The point is that there is nobody, nobody, that is being asked to not come to work that is going to make less money than if the city coffers were paying them to not work. Does that make sense? We didn't, we made a conscientious choice at the beginning of this crisis to not lay anybody off, because we wanted to make sure that, we didn't know people's different familial situations, maybe their spouse was laid off, and we didn't want to have a family that suddenly didn't have any incomes at all while they were waiting for unemployment filings, which we know have taken four to six weeks in some cases. So now we've gotten through, excuse me, let me pull this down. So now we've gotten through that period, and now we believe that we are in position that we can take people and furlough them, put them, get them to go on unemployment compensation, where they are actually making more money than if the taxpayers of the city of York were paying them right now. So that's the key to the decision-making here, not necessarily the number of people or the number of hours, it's that anybody that we furlough is making equal or more by us furloughing them.
And Mayor, I might have, I'm sorry, I might have missed it because I was on the phone, but also, anyone who's furloughed will keep their health insurance.
Yes, I was just gonna add that. The part of the furloughing is that everybody keeps their health insurance also. So it's just a matter of the federal government and state government paying them their salaries, instead of the local city government paying them their salaries. And we'd be happy to answer any, any questions in the future.
Mr. Ray, when will the furloughs begin?
It'll begin no later than June 1st.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. So just a couple of final comments from the administration, is that, yes, I heard it mentioned, Election Day is June 2nd. Please, there are plenty of opportunities for mail-in ballots now, anybody that applies can do a mail-in ballot, and so we want to make sure that everybody votes. The crisis should not be a reason to not enact your voting right as an American. Then I mentioned it earlier, but just one more time, yellow phase, the parks are open, but park equipment is closed, so no playgrounds, basketball courts, skate parks, or the pavilions. Also, the, there are businesses that are still closed, please follow the state's guidelines on all businesses that are closed, and paid parking and the parking garages begin again on Tuesday. The reason that we did not have paid parking was because so many people were out of work, and so many people, and there were more cars than ever because of people not being at work. So we opened up the parking garages, we maintained that, and now it is time to get things up and running. The General Authority lost hundreds of thousands of dollars, and as we know, that money has to be paid to keep up the parking garages. The concrete doesn't stop deteriorating just because the cars aren't going in and out, or we're not, we're not charging. The, you know, all the things, the elevators, the lights, all the things that we need to pay for, or they need to pay for, the General Authority, they continue to accrue debt. So we will be going back on Tuesday to paid meters throughout the city, and parking garages will be also charging. So, and also, street sweeping, we've been doing street sweeping, so as to your comment about the trash, we are hopefully going to be doing a better job street sweeping now, because we let the public know that we weren't enforcing street sweeping with fines, but we asked them nicely to try and open up the streets so that we could sweep. Well, that didn't work very well, and our streets are dirtier. I agree with you, Councilwoman, completely. And so now we are going back on June 4th, on June 1st, to enforcing the street sweeping law. So, everybody, and I do this myself, not at my house I'm at now, but when I lived in a house that I had to move my car, you can set your alarm, you can set a monthly alarm for street sweeping day, and you'll never have to worry about a ticket. We don't want to be ticketing the citizens of York for street sweeping, we want the cars to be moved so that we can clean. But if we don't ticket, then people don't move their cars. So this is not a reason for us to try and get money, or a way for us to try and get money. As many of you may know, we actually reduced the street sweeping fines from $50 to $40, but we still need to get people to move so that we can clean up that trash that Councilwoman Ritter-Dixon was referencing. So I believe those are all my comments, and thank you, council, for getting together in these difficult times.
Yes, and Mayor, Sandy, this is Sandy, just for the noise, is there a way that residents can report noise violations? Do we have an email, or is there a phone number?
That's the police.
I feel like there was-
Yeah, noise goes directly to the police, that's a 911 call.
We don't have anything with economic development that we can report for violations? I thought there was an email for something.
No, the noise ordinance isn't, so I would be happy in the future to talk to council about adjusting our noise ordinance, because I find it horrible and unenforceable. I had for six years talked about going to a decibel limit, a scientific, objective way to measure it. The police don't necessarily want to carry around decibel meters, even though I've got one on my cell phone. I've had discussions since I've been in office about how to improve this, and maybe once we get through all this stuff, maybe we can all sit down in, at one of our elected officials' meetings, and see if we can brainstorm about some better ideas of how to get a more enforceable noise ordinance. Because right now, it essentially is not being enforced unless the person calling in and complaining is willing to go to a magistrate and testify that the noise was too loud for them. That is not a, that is not a proper system, but that's been the system in place for as long as I can remember.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, I was thinking about the, there was an email for bikes last summer.
Oh, yes, Dirt Bike Info.
So that's what I was thinking about, yeah.
And that's still happening. Dirtbikeinfo@YorkCity.org is still, is still viable, and while it is very, very difficult to safely catch them, we are always, always interested in anybody that wants to let us know where those bikes are being kept. Because if we know where the bikes are being kept, the illegal dirt bikes, then, when the police spot them, we might be able to catch them when they go back, and we might actually be able to get them. But it's too dangerous to chase them. The only real way to, to capture those folks that are running, running wild with the dirt bikes, and it hasn't been too bad, right now I've seen more, more adults on motorcycles going way too fast through the city than I've seen the dirt bikes. But certainly, if folks can help us find out where those, I call them the nests of dirt bikes, because there'll be a garage with like five or 10 of them in there, where the young people keep them, and then bring them out and unfortunately engage in dangerous activities on our streets. So, thank you, yes, we're interested in that still, too. Dirtbikeinfo@YorkCity.org. Thank you, and I apologize, President Nixon, for taking up so much time with our comments.
Very good. Thank you all, this meeting is adjourned.